Well, we got the, it looks like we have everyone.
Okay, thanks. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Manzanita Planning Commission to order. On today's agenda is a public hearing on a legislative land use matter to be heard by the Planning Commission. Just want to remind everyone, Planning Commission members are appointed by the city council and serve as volunteers. Our role is to conduct public hearings and make decisions about land use matters in the city of Manzanita. In this hearing, we're not resolving a land use application. Instead, the Planning Commission is acting as in its legislative capacity to make recommendations to city council for the adoption of changes to these ordinances. The Street Improvement Standards Ordinance 91-2, zoning ordinance number 95-4, and the subdivision ordinance number 95-5. The idea is to conform these ordinances to the policies set forth in the revised transportation system plan. We will hear public testimony today as needed. The hearing will proceed section by section following the staff report. And then questions or comments of the commissioners as we go through. Once we hit the end of all of the most recent revisions, we'll open the meeting to public testimony, if any, and we'll limit that testimony to three minutes. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward the items in the staff report. And as always, please avoid repetition. Just state that you agree with the previous speaker, if that's your intent. Do we have any written proposal or letters? Scott, do we receive anything?
No, I have not received any comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. It's my hope today that the commission can reach consensus on each of the sections that were revised following the last meeting. As we move through the staff memo and then we'll, so that we don't have to revisit them again in case there's a third meeting on this required. Okay, staff, would you like to go through your revised and updated staff report?
Sure. This is Scott. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for going through this with me. Unfortunately, I missed the previous meeting. I believe it was November meeting where we went through this. Leila walked you through it and we had some changes to this. So what we did was we worked through some of the suggested edits and questions that came up during that November meeting. And this current draft of the ordinance, the three ordinances are where we are now. So I guess my question is, my plan was to go through just the parts that were changed and updated? Or would you like to go back through each section in its entirety? It's my question, I suppose.
I would throw that open to the commissioner, to the commission. From my part, I think we hit consensus on everything that wasn't sent back for revisions, if that's your recollection. If anyone objects to that.
That sounds good. I'll focus on kind of the updates. And then if there happens to be questions as we go through, we can do that as well.
That'd be great. Thank you, Scott.
I'm going to share my screen. Oh, Scott, can you let me share my screen, please?
Okay, she'll be able to share.
I got it. Okay, great. Can everyone see the staff report, the memo? Great. And hopefully you all obviously had a chance to read through this prior to the meeting. So interestingly enough, the first thing that we added was a definition of development. We quickly found out that there was no definition in our zoning ordinance that defined development. So this is the development definition that we've added. The main reason we did this is because the section below here, section three, which are improvement requirements, talk a lot about development and all developments, for example, in that first sentence. So we felt that it was really important to have that definition of development. I think it'll be good to have in there just generally as it pertains to the overall zoning ordinance. So that's one thing we added. The next thing is the section three, improvements required. This came from a comment on section, I think, 5.030, which was the conditional uses in the subdivision ordinance. And there was a question there about what those were, would these requirements be required to, for just general development? And we quickly realized that we didn't have any improved requirements for general developments. It was only mentioned in the conditional use section of the subdivision ordinance. So we did some research and we looked at some other cities. And we came up with this section three, which is improved requirements when doing development. I'm not going to read through them all. But essentially, we're talking about right-of-way requirements that would be required based on the functional class of the street. What you'd need to do to existing streets in terms of any improvements to existing streets. What has to happen with proposed streets? And we talked about required improvements for that and half-streets. We talked about extensive improvements, what extensive improvements should be, have to do. We cite the transportation plan specifically and the ordinance that creating the street improvement standards. We also say things like, improvements shall include any bikeways designated in the transportation system plan. What else? If the applicant's required to do street improvements, the city manager may accept future improvements guarantee and lieu of street improvements. So we've kind of left that out there. If they can't do the street improvements right of way, we allow them to do partial improvement. Or there may be nature of existing development adjacent properties that make improvements more sense in the foreseeable future. What else do we have?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, please, please.
Sorry. I noticed that these definitions, so far what we're talking about are the street improvement standards. And I wondered if the definitions of development and, you know, other defined terms flow also to the other ordinances?
This actually would be in the zoning ordinance. So this is section one of your your zoning ordinance is where this definition would be placed.
Okay, right, the line just above that says, "street improvement standards."
That's just because that's the ordinance, the name of the ordinance that we would be adopting. So this would actually fall in the front, this would be street improvement standards ordinance. But we would also be making a change to the definition section of the zoning ordinance with this definition.
That was my question. Thank you. Okay, got it.
So it's not specific just to street standards. I guess that's what I want to be clear. It would be applicable to the whole ordinance. What else did we do? We have a procedure for modification. Basically has to be applied when the land use approval occurs. We have criteria for modifications.
Scott, I have a question as well.
Sure, Lee.
Go ahead, Lee.
Thank you. Was that Phil?
Yes.
Thank you, Phil. So seven mentions modifications when the criteria in 4A and any one of criteria four B through E are met. I think that's a typo. I think it should be seven instead of four.
You're right. Thank you. We will fix that. And the other thing I noticed too is that this, we had some formatting issues in this document. So I think once we get it in the ordinance itself, we'll make sure all the formatting is great. So if you do see typos or formatting errors, please note them and we'll make sure we fix them. One other thing I wanted to mention is this is, if you as a commission tonight want to make a recommendation that this go to council, there's a step in between where we're going to take it to the city attorney for review. So that'll happen as well. So I just want to make sure everyone knew that.
Scott, I have a question.
Sure.
Under six modification procedure, can you define for me what a green street element is?
Sure. So a green street element might be a bio swell, something that captures stormwater in that way would be a definition of a green street improvement. That would be just one example.
Okay, thank you.
So that was a big section. I mean, we added a whole bunch of language there. I think it strengthens the ordinance and it allows us to really put some requirements on what you have to do when you do a development in terms of improvements. Yeah, Bert?
Yeah, I had, just maybe you can clarify for me on section three, proposed streets.
Yes.
It's excepted as otherwise provided, but a development includes blah, blah, blah. Should not exceed a pavement width of 40 feet. And then half-streets, when a half-street is created, a minimum of 22 feet of driving service shall be provided by the developer.
Yep.
Okay, and maybe down further, it deals with sidewalks and all that other stuff, I guess, is what I'm asking here. When you say pavement, you're really meaning the driving service for vehicles and bicycles, correct?
Yes, but I think that's also, it's true. We talk about the width for sidewalks and bike lanes and things like that down further in the document. So that would be applicable to any of those standards. And this would be just the paved area, yes.
Okay, and then presumably paving is defined clearly somewhere.
Well, that's a really good point. I don't know if we do define, I'd have to look to see if we define what paving is in the definitions. I don't know if it needs to be defined. We do talk about different types of improvements in terms, sometimes it's gravel. So it's not always paved area. We can, I can jump to that section if you'd like with the other standards.
I just want to make sure that we're, you know, it's integrated with.
Okay. I believe it is. I will make sure it is as well, though. Any more questions on this section that we added before I jump to the next one? Yes, Tom?
On criteria seven E.
Okay.
Application of the standards of this chapter to the development would be grossly disproportionate to the impacts created. I assume that's based on the Supreme Court's cases involving takings. And what I'm wondering, because I haven't looked at those cases in many years, we are not being any more generous than the Constitution requires.
I believe you're correct in that standard. And this was, this was the language that actually the city of, where did I get Sherwood used? So I borrowed it from the city of Sherwood and I thought it was a, it was a good criteria.
Okay. I recall from my days of measure seven litigation that Sherwood was a hotbed of property rights.
Yep.
Advocates. So all I'm suggesting is that, can you flag that for
Yes.
the attorney? Well, actually, we should discuss this among the commission.
Okay.
I don't I don't want to be more generous than the Constitution requires us to be in terms of waiving our standards. You know, if the Constitution says, "These standards are so stringent that you can't apply them to a development without it becoming a taking for which you do compensation," fine. I just don't, I would not like us to be requiring relaxing of the standards if the Constitution wouldn't do that. And I'm not sure whether the grossly disproportionate standard is the right language for that.
Okay.
Does that make any sense to anyone other than me?
Yeah, it seems kind of fuzzy language.
If I understood you correctly, Tom, you're saying that you want the city to be able to take as much as, push it as far as we can without being unconstitutional and not hold back.
Yeah, in sort of a reverse sort of way, in the sense that we, what we're talking about here is we are going to relinquish our standards, you know, if we have to. But not if we, I wouldn't want to if we don't have to in order to avoid an unconstitutional taking.
So yeah, what it's saying is basically if someone comes in and wants to not meet all of our criteria, that they would have to look at one of these, but if they want to make a modification, it would have to be for one of these reasons. And one would be for that takings reason that Tom's mentioning, where would it, it would be.
Yeah, so if the constitutional standard is grossly disproportionate, fine, but if it's something stricter, like really, really grossly disproportionate, whatever the language may be, I want us to have that as our standard as well, so that we're not giving away things that we don't have to.
Tom, does the language in 7A help in any way? That's basically, we're saying 7A plus one, any one of the other criteria need to be met. But it says, "Any modification shall be the minimum necessary to alleviate the hardship or disproportional impact." Is that, does that address your question, or do we need to, something stronger?
We may not need anything stronger, because maybe that's the standard that the Supreme Court announced. And, you know, in a series of cases where they said, local governments had granted, you know, a development application, but said, "Oh, by the way, you have to build a bike path adjacent to this property and pay to do that." And the Supreme Court said, "No, that requirement is so disproportionate to the consequences of the development you're allowing, that you can't require them to do that." And I don't remember just sitting here whether grossly disproportionate is the language the Supreme Court used. And we may not need to sort it out here, but all I'm asking, Scott, is that you flagged that for city attorney, because they will know.
Okay. And Tom, I would love to have, listen, a little email sentence from you that I could put in there as a flag, just so I can make sure I get your concern properly addressed.
Okay.
Do you mind doing that?
No, I'll do that.
Okay.
Tom and Scott, that may be tied a little bit also to, let's see. Number 4A, where it says applicant may be required to dedicate land for required public improvements only when the exaction is directly related to and roughly proportionate to the impact of the development.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So those two probably want to make, just need to make sure they're coordinated. And then I have an additional question on 4B. Due to the nature of existing development on adjacent properties, it is unlikely that street improvements would be extended in the foreseeable future. And the improvement associated with development under review does not by itself provide a significant improvement to street safety or capacity. And I'm assuming that's for all the unimproved streets in the city where there is no paving or sidewalks or anything. But if, if up here, it says if the applicant is required to provide street improvements, the city manager may accept future improvements guarantee in lieu of street improvements. And so if on one of the unimproved streets, if someone wanted to develop a lot there, would they need to do the bond for that future improvement, even though there's no paving on those streets?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I don't think it, it's not specific to a bond. I think it's basically, it would be an agreement or contractual guarantee as part of the approval by the city manager. So I don't think there has anything to do with a bond or anything, because there's no fee in lieu. We're not saying that you can pay to not do the improvements either. It's just there would be, I guarantee that that work would be done at a future time. Those improvements would be done at a future time.
It would be a pay, I kind of think I promised.
Well, it would typically be a condition of approval.
Well, but if the street's a gravel street, you know, it's very unlikely that a little section would be paved, right?
Yeah, exactly.
If a bond isn't the mechanism of the city has the lever to go back and get that paved when someday the whole thing gets paved. I just, maybe that's something the attorney can take a look at and just make sure.
That's a really good question. That's a really good point. I think we should check that out, and I'll do so.
I don't think a bond is probably reasonable, because probably not those streets are ever going to get paid.
Sure.
And, and so, I don't know, what's the guarantee for the city if that really needs to be part of this document?
Okay, I will, we will get that clarified. Any other questions on this section before I move? There's a couple other additions we made. Okay, we can come back to this too, if you notice something that's not gone forever. We can come back. You'll notice here, we haven't, this was from last time, but we have, this chart has been now updated based on all the requirements and notes from the last meeting. And we checked with FIRE and ODOT on a lot of these width, street widths. So that was kind of updated based from the last version. This is all in the last version. This, there was one thing we updated here. We had rural and urban standards. Come to find out, we checked with ODOT, we are under Manzanita's urban standards. So we removed the rural spacing, rural standards.
Yeah, just on that point, I don't think in Manzanita, there's any speed limit over 40 miles per, or 45, probably.
Yeah, even on 101, I don't think there is.
Yeah, so 50 and 55 or higher wouldn't apply.
Yeah, it wouldn't, but this, this was their standards, ODOT standards.
Okay, then I had one more question. If you go back up to the bike or the, oh, let's see, I guess it's really the street widths chart.
Oh, okay, yes.
That one. And the question I had was on the local with advisory bike lane. I think the question, and then you have bike facility, it says six feet advisory bike lanes plural. Does that mean for the local streets that if a, and then on the left, it says singular advisory bike lane. So does that mean that a new, say a PUD or something would be needing to provide 12 feet of advisory bike lanes?
I think it's just, it's six feet, because this is for local street. So it wouldn't be on both sides. It would be one side, and it's only on the streets that show up on the TSP map figure 12. So it wouldn't be every development. It would be only where it's identified in the transportation system plan, where those, where those advisory bike lanes would be, because it's not every street in the city.
Well, maybe, maybe it just, you need to get rid of the S on that lanes, so it's clear.
Okay.
Confusing for me.
I think that's right. That's a good point.
Can I ask a question about the minor collector?
Please.
Okay, it says right-of-way here, 40 feet. Gravel lanes two, each gravel lane is 10 feet, that's 20. On-street parking, I'm assuming that's both sides, that's 16. You've got a bike facility, 12. And a planter bumper, two. Can you tell me how you get 40 feet out of that?
Yeah. We don't get 40, you get 32. But that would be, that's just the right-of-way. So a lot of the time, you'll notice, even in the city now, a lot of your street right-of-ways are 40 feet wide, yet only a portion of them are paved or only a portion of them have are improved. So it's basically saying on a minor collector, you have 40-foot right-of-way for space, but you're not required to fill that entire space with paving or a bike facility or anything like that.
So where does the, where does the bike facility and the planter bumper come in?
It's required on the minor collector.
Right, but I mean, aren't you adding to the 36 feet that you've already got?
You have the 36 feet, we have two drive lanes. It's actually four, it's more than 40, isn't it?
Yeah. That's my point.
Yeah, these were, these were all messed up last time.
Hold on, let me look at the older version real quick. I thought we had fixed that, darn it. I'm sorry, I'm bringing up the other, the last one, so I can see if that, if we just missed that change or how that happened. Yeah, it's supposed to be 60.
What's supposed to be 60?
The right-of-way's wrong. I don't know if I can zoom into this one, but no, it's supposed to be 40. It's 40 is right.
Well, I don't. We have two lanes at 10, 10 apiece.
It comes out to more than 40 is the problem.
Yeah, it does.
We have 52 feet worth of stuff packed into our bag.
Yeah, it should be 50 feet, I think. And 50 feet is actually what the right-of-ways are in Manzanita, I believe. But.
I think they're mostly 40, aren't they?
They're mostly 40. The local, small streets are.
Well, from local on down to local with an advisory bike lane, you're dealing with 40.
Yeah.
Minor collectors is 40, you're still okay. Well, no, you're not okay there. Major collector, you've got a right-of-way of 58, you're using 50. So there needs to be a change somewhere along the line.
Yeah, I think this minor collector number is incorrect. So we have to make sure we update this to, so we can fit what we're requiring.
I'm in a meeting here, but I.
So I'll do that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, and look at it.
Should be 50. Thank you. Good catch. I've been looking at too many versions of this truck.
Thank you.
Anything else anyone notices?
I have a, well, how far down are we talking about? Are we going to the next section here?
Yeah. I wanted to jump down to the next addition.
Okay. Wait, you went too far. Go back up. Did we, did we agree on the maximum block dimensions?
These were what were agreed, what were from the notes from the last meeting here, yes.
I had a question. Well, I remember Bert bringing up 250 by 500.
That's.
Yeah, I don't see the maximum width or depth. I don't know how you would phrase that. And I wanted to bring up another question and kind of revisit that for a second. We went to 500 feet because of the walkability issue, if I remember correctly. And I'm not sure that adding another street after 500 feet, it kind of seems like we're using a hammer to, to, we're going, a sledgehammer to drive in a nail. Our old standard was 1,000 feet and. our old standard was a thousand feet and the walkability issue could be solved more simply by adding a pedestrian, um, between a pedestrian path after say five hundred feet or after four hundred feet, uh, you know, have a, and we, we actually bring that up for, back up a couple of sections up that, um, the city may require a, um, pedestrian path. Anyway, two things to think about. One is, do we want to go back to a thousand feet and add a specific on, um, a pedestrian path? And the other is, do we want to put a maximum depth of two hundred and fifty feet in here somehow?
Uh, John, I'll, I'll respond to that. Uh, I, I would be pretty opposed to a thousand feet and there's reasons for that. One is that the speed on the street just generally gets too fast when you have that, uh,
Yes.
uh, distance. So I think the five hundred is, is a reasonable, the state speaks to six hundred as a recommendation, uh, as the maximum. And then they, uh, there is a little asterisk that says maximum block with two hundred and fifty.
It does say that. I, I missed that completely.
Yeah, just, you know, usually you put the asterisk up there somewhere else, uh, in the chart. So.
Right.
That.
I think we need to add the asterisk up in the chart.
I'm fine with the five hundred feet. I just thought it was, uh, you know, we're paving more than maybe we need to, but if, if the, uh, uh, I would like to see some sort of mid-block pedestrian path. But other than that, um.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, uh, gotta be pretty reasonable. I've done projects that have, uh, less than five hundred feet and do have a mid-block pedestrian path also. But I think this is pretty reasonable and this is what, uh, this would be pretty much the same as, you know, the main part of town. The older town off, uh.
We have some long blocks in town. We have blocks well over five hundred feet in town. And it's not the drive ability that's the issue with those blocks. It is the walkability and they, you know, as far as I'm concerned, they all need a pedestrian path. Probably that, that, um, horse is out of the barn, but I would certainly like to see that in future development. And you have point, maybe remove the asterisk, uh, about the two hundred and fifty feet. I, I missed that the first time.
Yeah, it needs to be in the chart, I think.
Yeah, that's probably good.
Can I make a comment with regards to pedestrian path? I'm concerned about who's going to maintain it.
Well, the few that we have right now are not very well maintained.
They're not maintained by the city at all. It's the neighbors that are doing it.
Hmm. Or not doing it, as the case may be. I mean, like I said, there's, uh, we probably have three or four around town that are, uh, Phil, if you say they're maintained, I'll believe you, but.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying if they're getting any maintenance at all, it's being done by neighbors in that particular area.
Yeah, that's possible.
And I, I think, I think that's a point of, uh, or a question that should be asked before we start talking about pedestrian paths as to who's going to maintain it.
I would just add too that, you know, if someone were to come in with, uh, a planning and development or a subdivision, those pedestrian connect, connections could be something that you could require as a planning commission also when you're doing your review of those projects. So that, that might be more of a one-off situation than something that's required every five hundred feet or something like that. I, I kind of, you know, I hesitate to require mid-block pedestrian, you know, connections at every block.
Scott, did I see further up, back up in the earlier, wasn't there a, um, a sentence about, let me see, kind of present a grid pattern, yeah.
Yeah, the grid pattern sentence?
Well, there was a, there was a, a statement about, um, yeah, there it is, mid-block pedestrian connections.
Yep, said we may require them.
So, so we're within our rights to reform. Okay, but I just wanted to get that in there.
Okay.
I think.
Yeah, I think we just didn't want to blanket it, but instead, basically it's saying the city may require it. And of course, during part, part of your review of a proposal, you might want to say, hey, we got to be able to walk through here.
Yeah. That's probably mostly, uh, an issue with multifamily, uh, type residential, maybe some commercial, so.
Sure, sure. And if you do get five hundred foot blocks, I mean, that's definitely a lot more walkable. So.
Yeah, I agree. Five hundred feet is more walkable than a thousand.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, I'm going to scroll down to the next one so we can keep it moving here. Um, we did, we didn't update this. This is, there might have been a few edits based on, um, some comments, but essentially this is the same in terms of your general requirements for off-street parking. We did add this bike, bicycle parking standards and requirements. We noticed that, um, you know, we're requiring these two spaces for five vehicles. So we're requiring parking for biking, but we're not really telling what it's got to look like and what are, what are the requirements. So we did some standards for spacings and, um, where it should be. And we, we borrowed some graphics that show the spaces that you'll need for bike, bicycle parking. So I thought that was just helpful to add the uh, graphics. Any thoughts or questions about the addition of the bike parking standards?
I have a question with regards to the off-street parking requirements.
Okay.
Um, church, club, or similar place of assembly, um, I'm thinking of one instance in particular where there is a, an association that has been limited with regards to any type of future development because they cannot supply one space for every fifty square feet of floor area used for assembly. And it's the assembly part that's driving it.
Yeah.
And, um, I noticed that you have retail restaurants and library. Well, that's kind of an assembly area, but you're, you're you're calling out one space for each four hundred square feet of those floor area. Now with, with a church, I can understand. Uh, but similar place of assembly to me is wide open. And I'm wondering in the future if we don't need to visit that or at least think about uh, areas or buildings where that fifty square feet and one space required for each fifty square feet isn't, uh, a deterrent with regards to any kind of an expansion or remodeling, et cetera.
Yeah. This is actually interesting enough, when we were doing the parking calculations for City Hall, um, we had considered it a place of assembly, just the council chambers. So we had to use that parking standard for the council chambers area. So it's just, it was interesting that you caught that, um. But in, in your, in that case, if someone wanted to expand and they didn't have the area, you know, they could come in and either ask for, you know, a, a variance, or they could look for doing a shared parking, uh, agreement with an adjacent lot or owner. I mean, that's something that I've seen done where you, and, and the city would allow that if they came up with a shared parking agreement to use adjacent parking on some other, on another property.
Right, but the city is asking for something in writing on that and that's has been a problem in the past with regards to different businesses agreeing that they would share a space with someone else.
I was just trying to give, give some options and examples of what could potentially be done in this situation.
This is probably a discussion for down the road, but, um.
One, one item that was a change, which, uh, it's in here somewhere, uh, which is that, uh, only when the, uh, an addition exceeds twenty percent of the existing area would the parking need to be updated. And that gives some flexibility for some of the existing, uh, you know, uh, businesses or churches or whatever to not have to provide all the parking tied to this. So maybe that helps.
Yeah, that is a little flexibility there, yeah. Okay. Uh, any other thoughts on this?
Are we going to come back and revisit parking in the process of the, um, revised comprehensive plan or is, is this our one shot at it?
I would say you probably have another shot at this.
Yeah, I think we need to kind of bookmark this and have a much greater discussion about parking in general.
Yeah, it's, it's a screwy ratio in many, many ways.
Yeah, and, and I, a lot of communities are sort of reversing tact on their parking policies. And as I say, I think as, as a group and as a community, we need to maybe come back and revisit this.
Yep. You know, one of the other things that's going to happen is Senate Bill four oh six, the middle housing code work.
Right.
That's also going to have parking requirements, reduced parking requirements as, as part of their required rules.
If, if I remember right, the, this section, the only reason this section is included here is that it adds bicycle parking to whatever we had already was existing. And so it seems to me that what we're really looking at is the addition of the bicycle requirements and whether those are reasonable. And then I, I think we are going to be wide open on parking. Um, as we, as we get to the, um, the rest of the comprehensive plan revisions.
Tom, do you have a question?
Well, uh, yeah, just to be clear on what we're, we're, we're doing here because I have lately become quite the parking skeptic. And, um, i- if it's, if for sure, we're going to revisit this later, then I'm okay on passing on this now. Um, uh, otherwise I want to deal with parking requirements now before we send this on.
Yeah, my, my, my direction, my recollection was that this was, we were going to leave what we have now. This is our current standards. And we were, we're adding the bicycle requirements to those current standards was my understanding. Um, so I don't believe we even really discussed that previously. Karen, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. Yep. This is only, we're only looking at bicycle requirements.
Okay, but I, but yeah, I mean, every time we've been on here, we always talk about parking.
Yep.
That's what planners do. I mean, it's.
Well, it's, it's critical to the livability of, of our city and we definitely need to look at each one of these. Um, and as you said, um, you know, we're going to be looking at middle housing completely differently, including different parking for that. So we'll be, we'll be looking at this.
Parking, I mean, I'm not joking when parking is everything when it comes to development and planning. I mean, every, it, many times it comes down to how much parking is provided. It can kill projects. It can do a lot of good things. It can do a lot of bad things. So you have to be very careful when it comes down to parking. When we did, uh, I used to do modeling a lot and one of the first models we did was, we're just trying to do physical models of buildings to figure out how much space you had. You know, if you have this open space requirement, if you have this much parking required. And we developed a little model called the Parkomatic, which was pretty cool. And it was, it was basically spitting out results on why your project doesn't work because the parking requirements are too stiff. So anyway, I'm with you. I think that's a discussion we need to have. Um, but yeah, today I think we're just focusing on the bicycle stuff. Um, I think that that was really, I think we might have one other addition down here. Uh, we just added this was an ODOT spec they gave us to my, a little bit correct because we just said, um, decompose granite. We updated that just to some wording there. I think that might be it for additional changes. Oh, down here, site access. This was the last one. So this is, um, in the subdivision ordinance. Um, and was talking about access and this was in here before each lot or parcel or street should have an easement access for width of at least twenty feet. Um, this one came from the fire department. Driveways that exceed a hundred and twenty feet in length are also required to follow standards listed in the Tillamook Fire County uh, Defense Board. So that's an additional piece. And then we also had a provision for shared access to, for lots to be able to share the same driveway. So two or more structures and multiple parcels of land may jointly utilize the same parking loading, loading spaces. Um, I thought that was important to have that in there as well because that can happen when you have maybe it's, you know, a flag lot situation or something where you're sharing a driveway.
Isn't there a one-third or one to three ratio in there somewhere about a flag lot or a shared?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't understand that, John. I think bringing that up. Can you go to that section, Scott?
Yeah. That was, this, but remember, this is specific to the subdivision ordinance.
Oh.
I think that, uh, where was that? No, I'm not going to be able to find it, of course.
I think access was pretty far back up the.
Yeah, I think so it was. I don't know, it wasn't here. It was, I think it was even above this, wasn't it?
It was pretty far back.
Pedestrian access and circulation. That wasn't it, was it?
Nope. There it is. Minimum frontage, uh, item one right there. Yeah, three to one. Okay, we're, we got it.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, four oh one oh access.
Eight.
What is the width ratio of not greater than three to one? I tried to get this answered a couple of sessions ago and was told that this didn't exist, but it's there, so.
It's a good question where I'm going to go back up to it now.
And, and the reason I'm bringing the, bringing the question up is because of my question about three to one ratio, that brought up the fact that the fire marshal really is in control of this.
Yeah.
And so you had additional verbiage added that pretty much defines what the width is going to be.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'm wondering why this is even necessary.
Well, it's two different parts of the code. This part is, is the zoning. The other one is specific to subdivision. So if you're doing it, if you're doing, you're dividing lots. Uh, so this would be existing versus creating new lots, I think is the difference.
Can, can you explain to me, uh, let, let's say I've got a two hundred foot lot and I'm going to split it in two hundred feet deep to the second lot. So how wide an access do I need to provide?
Well, it's, I think it's three to one, it's the, the width to the length of the lot.
What does that mean?
Exactly.
What, I mean, does that mean, uh, width or not greater than three to one? Does that mean that I need, uh, thirty some foot wide easement or something?
Well, if it's a hundred feet deep, it has to be thirty-three feet wide, right?
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense.
I, I think it's the other way, Scott. I think it's, if you've got a fifty foot wide lot, you can't, you can't make a flag lot larger, wider than say twelve and a half feet.
But this is the, this isn't about lot size. It's about the, the.
Well, it's about minimum frontage. You're talking about frontage. So typical lots, fifty feet.
Yep.
You can't make, you can't force anyone to go larger than twelve and a half feet for a flag lot or for an access drive.
I think the code actually says it's, it's twelve feet because the maximum can be.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would agree, you know, and, and all this is going to have to get refigured out once the, you know, uh, cop plan process goes through and the housing gets integrated because, you know, all the lot sizes and stuff may be all subject to change. So we gotta, we gotta be careful or recognize that in some cases this is going to need to get revised, uh, in the future.
I mean, the other option here is we could change this to the language we used in the subdivision ordinance and it could be consistent. I mean, the other option here is we could change this to the language we used in the subdivision ordinance and it could be consistent. With 120 feet rather than doing three one ratio.
Well, it's, we got to be careful because we've got a bunch of existing lots here.
Yeah.
Um, so you you can't really do the subdivision.
Yeah, you're right.
Uh, because, you know, they have the ability to make the lots wider and and. An existing lot doesn't have that option.
Yep, you're right.
I have two properties within 100 feet of me and they're both. Well, actually, three. Two properties operate off of one access, one property operates off of one. And none of them are more than 20 feet, probably less.
I think there's supposed to be no, no more than 12.
Yeah, I think 12 is.
That's the driveway maximum for a single family.
Yeah, I I we just got a. You know, it's just like parking, you start making all this access stuff too big and then you're pretty soon you can't build any housing.
So what is it, you got, is there any consensus on what we want to do with this minimum frontage requirement or requirement?
I I'd just make it 12 feet myself.
Okay.
I I think 12 feet is is reasonable. Especially since the bulk of the. Uh, infield lots or or the bulk of the lots in the stand are 50 feet. Trying to have 50 foot frontage.
Okay, let me bring up. One thing. What are you, what are you going to do about a fire truck that's trying to answer a call to that flag lot?
Well, then that's exactly why they they mentioned meeting the standards for the fire. For the subdivisions, 120 feet.
Yeah, if it's over 120 feet, then you've got to beef it up.
You've got to go to 22 feet wide typically, 12 is okay for any, but a flag lot, again. The bulk of the lots in town are 100 to 120 feet deep.
Yeah.
So. If flag lots is our issue, I think we're covered in the 12 feet.
Yeah, and I had also just mentioned if someone comes in with a zoning permit and wants to get. Get a permit, fire reviews everything.
Reviews everything.
And they're going to be, and if we don't have, if we're not meeting their standards, they're going to say, hey, we need a wider driveway.
Okay, so long as that's. That's the. The plan of attack with regards to that, I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure that we don't. Sprang some fire truck back in there and be able to getting back out because you know that it's going to be. It's not going to be ideal conditions, the power is going to be out, it's going to be dark and how do you get the fire truck back out of there?
Yeah.
You know, I I think once the comprehensive plan moves forward and we get a, you know, a. Uh, urban design group planner on board. Uh, you know, all this should be reviewed by that team because integrated with the, you know, the housing. Stuff, because it all has to be kind of integrated. And order to make sure that we're optimizing the limited land that we have. Uh, to make sure that we're being able to provide the affordable housing that's necessary.
I agree, this was looked at, if you think about this, this was looked at from a transportation specific. You know, view.
Yeah, so the whole thing, as far as I'm concerned, needs another pass at it after that comprehensive plan process and. Urban design planning team gets on board to make sure that we're creating the best. Uh, possible, uh, you know, zoning ordinance to facilitate kind of community we want, but also the affordability of our community. And all the street stuff and, you know, all that can really drive up cost and make it not an affordable place. So. Anyway.
Okay, so maybe we'll just.
Like, for instance, the flag lots, I think very likely the minimum lot size could be changed. And that's what's happened, you know, in most communities, you know, to make sure that you can own a. A residence on a small lot. And, you know, here in Seattle, my my 100 year old house is on a 2,400 square foot lot.
Yep. I know, it is funny that, I mean, it's so often that it's 5,000 square feet, nothing smaller. You know, 2,500 square foot lots, you could still do a lot with.
Yeah, or 1,500, you know, so I think all that is subject to, you know, the community process.
Um, okay, I think access was the last big addition, I think we, yeah, we made it through. Um, any other topics of discussion, it sounds like I need to make a couple minor edits before we. Um, send it off to be reviewed by the attorney.
Did we miss anything, does anyone have a a pet? Um, section? That we haven't addressed properly or thoroughly? Okay, I don't hear any. Um, any other comments from the commission before we open to public comments? Okay, I don't hear any, so, uh, other Scott? Can you let me know if any hands are raised?
Uh, Karen, I do not have any hands raised at this time.
Okay. Great, that means we've done a good job as commissioners and staff did a good job in preparing its report. Um. I really hate that we have to send this back for a little bit more, but I imagine. That we will perhaps have to look at this again. Uh, Scott, maybe you can tell me.
You know.
This goes to the attorney and then assuming that we've. Come to some consensus on this plan as it is, if the attorney makes any revisions, does that come back to us or does it go straight to council?
We were hoping that if you're comfortable with this, I know that there were a couple edits that came up tonight that I don't think. I would, if we can, if we can keep from having to come back with those minor edits that. Um, I think we could, you know, approve recommendation with the small edits that came up during this and then it goes to the attorney. And then you wouldn't get a chance to see it again before it went to the council. And they could make changes as well.
Yeah. Um. I I don't think that we need a a vote necessarily if. Because, you know, this is just basically, it's a recommendation that we're making.
Yep.
Um, but I would love it if we can achieve consensus on. Um. Adopting the staff report findings of fact and conclusions. As with minor revisions from today to recommend to council that the revisions to the ordinance that is presented in the staff report. Be adopted to align city ordinances with the transportation system plan. Did I wind that around too many turns in that one long sentence?
Are you asking for a vote?
Uh, I'm asking for consensus if this.
Okay, I can see.
Karen, could I have a friendly amendment to your. Uh, and that, uh, the ordinance will be revisited. As part of the comprehensive plan process and housing. You know, attainable housing integration. Uh, in the future, some something like that, so that we kind of say we're going to come back to it.
Yeah, frankly, I think we're going, I agree with you, but I think we'll probably come at it more than once. As we go through each section of the comprehensive plan. Because there will be other parking, for example, parking related to commercial. Businesses and parking related to the housing, you know, those those will come up separately. I imagine in our, so I think we'll be looking at these. More more than once, certain sections will be revising more than once.
It makes sense, maybe, maybe there might be a work session or a, you know, planning commission work session to. To make sure that that they're not all siloed, but that somehow we're able to really step back and look at the big picture.
I'm hoping for good guidance from the consultant. To help us with that so that we don't have to. Again, you know, change everything, but that we, I just, I just want to assure everyone that we will definitely be looking at all of these things going forward. Because we're going to be. We're going to be making some changes.
Yeah, that goes without saying.
Yeah, yeah. So can we go ahead and forward this to council with the minor revisions that we discussed today? With the understanding that these are not the final word on any of these sections. Going forward.
I'm good.
Is that okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, staff? Take this to council.
Will do.
Okay, um. Any general updates for today, do we have anything coming down the pike next month?
Yes, we actually have a commercial mixed use designer meeting each month.
Uh, another design review, those are always fun. Um, anything else, Scott, that you're aware of?
Um, that's all the applications we have at this time.
Okay.
We do have, I think, three more pre-application conferences for other projects, so. We'll be working through those in the next couple months.
All right, so you're staying busy, that's good to hear.
I think we'll keep the commission busy this spring as well.
Good, okay, great. Uh, any last words from anyone before we call the meeting to a close?
Go Blue.
Go Dogs.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, everybody, I really appreciate your attention to detail, this is, it's really critical and it's very much appreciated. And thanks to staff for doggedly sticking with this project and getting it right, we really appreciate it. Okay, with that, the meeting is adjourned.
Happy New Year.